The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient wood sole terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good morning, and it is Saturday, March 1st, 2025. It is exactly 9:02. Welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. This is a workshop. We will not be taking public comment, and we may as well dive right into item number one. Question on immigration enforcement procedure and practice. And I know we have Chief Laurie here. If you'd like to come sit with us, that would be great. Actually, we also have Attorney O'Keefe here, and she can help us. Thank you very much for the overview of Lund v. Commonwealth. I thought that was really helpful. You're welcome. Chief Laurie.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing well. Madam Chair, if I could just kind of kick this portion off. So there's obviously a lot of well-justified interest in the topic that we're about to delve into regarding immigration. I've asked Chief Laurie to be here with us this morning to talk about locally Falmouth PD in the, what, year and a half period of time since Jeff has been on board as chief of police, kind of talk about practices and procedures with regards to how the department interacts with immigration, with federal officials. Madam Chair, you mentioned Lund v. Commonwealth, the 2017 court decision that basically lays the foundation, so to speak, with regards to how local law enforcement agencies operate in terms of interactions with ICE, with immigration, federal agencies. Maura, did you want to go through a quick kind of rundown overview? And again, I appreciate you putting together the summary, if you will, of Lund v. Commonwealth. Did you kind of want to touch on some of the major highlights of that?
Of the Lund decision?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to, absolutely. So Lund v. Commonwealth is a case that was decided by the SJC in 2017, and it is the decision that is referred to when immigration matters come up for law enforcement. It is the guidepost for what law enforcement can do in the face of being presented with a federal immigration detainer. What the case stands for is that immigration law is a civil matter. It is not a criminal matter. So law enforcement is not really part of the equation here. So a federal civil immigration detainer, served by an ICE agent issued from either the Department of Homeland or from an immigration court even, they do not act as an arrest warrant, essentially. It doesn't give law enforcement the right to hold anyone. If presented with a civil immigration detainer and law enforcement does hold someone under that detainer, it constitutes an illegal arrest, arrest under the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. So what this case concludes is that Massachusetts law does not provide any authority for local law enforcement to arrest or hold an individual based solely on a federal civil immigration detainer.
But, I mean, it's more than that. I mean, from what you're saying, it's not only does it not give authority, you're saying it prohibits. And that's, you know, even, right? I mean, that is...
Solely on immigration status.
Yeah.
But if they end up in custody on a criminal offense, then that changes, that changes the definition of that.
But what constitutes a criminal charge? Just arrest?
Rape?
Obviously, I know what a criminal offense is.
Well, you asked.
No, I didn't. I asked, what constitutes a charge, is what I'm saying. That you're saying, and I don't disagree, would authorize holding someone. What is the charge? Is just the fact that the person's been arrested? I mean, we had this case, obviously, the one that was being reported recently in the newspaper. And I was hoping that maybe the chief could explain, you know, the steps with respect to, you know, I mean, that was an egregious situation, and, you know, allegedly, this was a very serious crime that was committed, and you guys did what you were supposed to do. I just wonder if you could, using that as a focal point, bring us through the steps as to how your staff, you know, responded, and, you know, how things developed from there.
Normally, I don't discuss cases like this, but it was in the media. It was a very violent crime against a 15-year-old girl. The suspect was either 25 or 26, here illegally. We arrested him. We run his fingerprints. Feds call us and say, he's wanted, you know, they want to, ICE wants to come get him. We tell them, we tell them, yes, he was here, just like we say, if you called up and said, I have a message from my son, that he was arrested, and we would say, just what we did in this case, to federal officials, he's at the Vasspo County House of Correction. Vasspo County House of Correction transports him to, because there was no bail, to the district court. He's arraigned, and because of the violent nature of the crime, normally what the court does, they just release you to the back door. But in this case, because he was a dangerous person, a danger to society, they allowed him to come into their lockup area, and they took, the federal officials took this person into custody. And that's what we would do. This, you know, we would not release him. And to Lieutenant Hurst's knowledge, if you read the article that I did recently with the Vasspo County Sheriff, you know, we, I've never seen the federal officials take someone from a police station. Usually, it's from the court, you know, or they grab them wherever they're staying. The only way we would get involved is if there was a very violent criminal that was at, say, in a hotel in town, and federal officials were here, you know, we may send a couple of officers to the area just to ensure public safety in case something happens. But beyond that, we really don't get...
So, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not familiar with the procedure, but, but taking his fingerprints, then it was that act that made it known to ICE, just running the fingerprints on this individual, that's how they knew this individual was...
Every arrestee is processed, fingerprints, photographs, you know, information, and in many cases, we determine, sometimes they give us false information or a false name. In this case, you know, the feds notify us that, you know, they want him.
Chief, that goes right out of NCIC immediately? So that goes out to all federal agencies as well, right?
Yep, boom. Everyone gets notified.
That's when you get booked, that happens immediately, right?
And so he's, you know, all of a sudden, they get notified, just like if it's a stolen car or someone has a warrant, the bells and whistles go off, and, you know, they call us. And in this case, by the time they called us, we had already transported him to the Vasspo County House of Correction. And I want to say, and the sheriff wasn't wrong, you know, we need to be careful on how we talk, because if you look what happened in Boston, the immigrations are basically, because of some things the commissioner had said, said, "I'm coming to Boston, and I'm bringing hell with me." So, you know, it's one of those situations right now where, you know, this is what we do as local law enforcement. You know, our job isn't to round up people. We want to make sure that people that are victims of crime, like in this case, this was a young 15-year-old Brazilian girl, we want to make sure that she calls us like she did and reports it, and we don't want them to be in fear of that. So our goal really is just to serve the people of Falmouth, serve and protect, and do the job to the best of our ability. And we will assist those in times of crisis to make sure people are safe. And that's it in a nutshell.
Stay in our lane, right?
That's it. Stay in my lane.
And I just want to point out one thing about the Lund case, which is very different from the situation that we're just talking about here. The reason why the Lund case was decided as it was is because at the time the immigration detainer was issued, there were no more criminal charges pending against the defendant, and that is the only reason. So you can see, it's a vastly different world than what the Falmouth Police Department just introduced.
So it's kind of hard to use that as case law, if it's so vastly different, though, isn't it?
So, but we're talking about two different things.
Exactly.
If there are criminal charges, what, I think it's important to discuss the Lund case when you're talking about immigration in general, because a federal detainer on its own, it's important for everyone to understand this, the detainer alone is not a reason to hold anybody. And that's the only, that's really the point.
Maybe you could explain what a detainer is?
It's like, it's like a warrant. It's just a piece of paper that says, you need to hold this person.
But it's a civil...
But it is not a judicial warrant.
It's not a judicial warrant, and it's not, it's, and that's why it's not called a warrant. I said, it's like a warrant. It's simply exactly what it is, and I think it's important to keep calling it a federal civil immigration detainer, because it's unique.
I'm still trying to figure out what it is, though. I realize it's an arrest, similar to an arrest warrant, but...
It's a request.
Yeah, it's a request.
It's nothing but a request.
But is it a request that needs to be adhered to?
Well, so I think that's what we're talking about, right? The answer is no, if there are no criminal charges. But you have to separate that out. You know, in a criminal world, we let the police department do their job, and they know exactly what they're doing. If there aren't any criminal charges, and you're only left with this federal civil immigration detainer, it's not sufficient. It is simply a request. It is not enough to hold anybody.
I think it's really interesting, in the memo that you did, that I didn't know, was that it is a civil matter.
Yes.
It's not a criminal matter, and that's, I think, a huge difference. And then the other piece that was in your memo was, while entering the U.S. illegally is a crime, being present in the U.S. illegally without additional infractions is not a crime.
It's interesting, isn't it?
And that's, I think, I think that's something that we really need to recognize as well. Once you're here, regardless of, and tell me if I'm correct, regardless of how you got here, you get the same protections as everyone else.
Correct.
And there's one thing, well, two things like that. The only civil process that we're involved in are restraining orders, things along those lines, HBO's harassment protection orders. I have an officer that is attached to DEA Task Force, you know, he's a task force officer, TFO. And all the local officers that are part of that task force, even though they have federal authority, they're not going to get involved in any ICE operations. That's something that we worked out when all this was happening, because the DEA will assist ICE, but our officers that are local police officers will not participate in that action.
Just to follow up on the example, because I understand this was an egregious situation, a violent crime for, on a 15-year-old, but this theoretically could happen with a victimless crime, where someone is arrested, fingerprinted for shoplifting robbery. Same scenario could happen, and he'd end up being, you know, taken from the court by ICE.
It could be.
Right. So, I mean, what authority or what ability would the district court have to prevent that from, from happening?
I mean, I've heard, you know, the district court will have the federal officials wait outside.
Until the guy's actually left.
If it's a nonviolent person, and then he walks out the door, they grab him, you know, but in this case, you know, if it was a person that they...
All right. Well, that was what I was missing, Chief, so thank you.
And, you know, that's actually a good segue to the next part of the conversation. I think where we're headed with this is the general rule for, for ICE agents, their ability to enter into public buildings, is that in any public building, there are private areas and there are public areas, and no one is able to go into the private areas. So for, for example, in Town Hall, there are certain places that are just simply closed to the public. They are not open, and they are supposed to remain private, because that's where work gets done. They're, it's just like any, any workplace. There, you know, the public can go through the hallways, they can come into this room, they can go into the senior center, in any space where they're welcome. They cannot go into offices, they cannot go into office space. And there's a reason for that, not just for what we're talking about here, but I don't want to get too far afield, but for the First Amendment assessments here, it is very important, and I think this is what the courts are starting, are trying to do. Courts should have a policy, that's up to them. We don't have any authority over them, we don't have any connection with them, but ICE agents wouldn't be allowed to go into certain places in a courthouse.
Like the holding cell.
The holding cell, exactly. Or chambers, or anything behind the closed door. So waiting in the parking lot is, is how to do that.
So I have some questions about what you were talking about with both the First Amendment auditors and immigration issues in terms of the private spaces and training, but first of all, I want to thank Naseem and Mike for having this on the agenda and having this discussion. Chief Laurie for, for being vocal and clarifying what your practices have been, and to, Maura, for the brief, and also to whomever identified the policy from NADIC. I think it's, that, that policy is one, or something very similar to that, is something I would strongly support us adopting. I'm certainly not an expert, but I've done a bunch of research in recent weeks, attended the webinar that, the presentation that was in the packet, went on First Amendment auditors, a couple of others on immigration rights, talked to a number of people, and done some research of my own, and I feel that it's, that we really have a moral, a legal, and a financial imperative to ensure that our local law enforcement stays focused on the job of criminal law enforcement and, and using our resources for those purposes to ensure that we're executing our mission as a town, to be a welcoming community, and safety is a core part of that. And Chief Laurie, I think you're doing an incredible job, and we're just getting to the point of being fully staffed, and I think you've been doing an incredible job of instilling and fostering in our police officers a sense of guardian-first, warrior-as-necessary, building trust relationships, and, and I think that's where our resources need to go, not to doing the jobs of, or being assistance to federal civil immigration enforcement. And I know there's a lot of, I think having a policy that states that is important, just to make sure that that's, that's really clear. Because, and then I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there, and I actually printed out, it's just the first pages, I don't know if I made enough copies, but have a couple. There's, there's been a lot of research in the past 10 years on the ramifications of local law enforcement participating in federal immigration enforcement, and contrary to, I think, some public opinion, what that research shows is that in fact, communities where local law enforcement sticks to local law enforcement and to building trust relationships and using resources for those purposes, those communities are actually safer. And those communities where local law enforcement gets more immigration enforcement actually see higher rates of crime, specifically robbery and assault. So I think, as you said, staying, staying in our lane is the way that we, we execute our mission of being a welcoming and safe community for all. That's important.
I mean, I'll only say that, you know, I was the one who found the NADIC, NADIC policy, and I think it's, it's, it's good that we have it, and I think it's good that we look at it. I'm struggling to see what, actually, what's in the policy is anything different than what, what we're currently doing. You know, I certainly would consider, you know, possibly something, but at this point, I'm, at this level and right now, I'm satisfied that what we're doing is really no different than what the policy from NADIC says, but, you know, maybe, you know, there are enhancements to it that might better fit our situation. I mean, we certainly have a, an undocumented issue in this town, and, and a lot of that helps, helps the economy of the town, frankly. We know that. We also know the impact on children and children, families, so, and certainly something we need to be looking at, but at, right at this moment, I'm not sure I would support adopting, you know, a policy right now without some more discussion, which I think we should, we should have, so, thank you.
I'm sure...
I would agree with you as well. I think, I think that the chief has an incredible understanding of what... Oh, I'm sorry. I just hate having to back to people. Do you want to switch spots?
Maura doesn't mind.
No, I'm wrong. I would agree with Mr. Scali. I think that, that we have heard from our chief, he is responsible for the way his department conducts himself, and I think we have a very good understanding about the way he does that. And I would welcome more conversation, but I agree at this moment that I'm not sure that we have to institute a policy right now.
Madam Chair, I have one comment to make, just for the discussion. Maura had a great suggestion the other day. We met and talked about this a little bit, and it's in your packets, and Heather, you said you attended the webinar. The AGO, Attorney General's Office, did a webinar the other day that talked about, I'll call them guidelines, you know, best practices perhaps, and I think, you know, Chief Laurie does a fantastic job as well in the running the PD, you know. Peter and mine's job is the overall organization and making sure that the staff, right, and all of the facilities, all of the departments have some clarity with regards to like how to proceed. So in your packet, the AGO's presentation, I think does a great job outlining what I would consider best practices or guidelines to direct staff. And Maura, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit more about that, but it really, and again, these detainers, civil matters, not a judicial warrants, we're not attorneys, most of us, and, and it's important that an attorney, town council, if this situation ever arises at one of our offices, that we get in touch with the town council's office immediately to have a professional legal person review that. So Maura...
So one of the excellent points of guidance that I think that the AGO has issued on this matter is to make sure that everyone in any public building, any, all town employees understand what to do when faced with the presentation of a detainer or some sort of document requesting information or production of documents or of people. And I, I really, I think it would be in the best interest of everybody to hold a sort of know-your-rights training. What that would encompass is having everybody understand what to do in that kind of situation, because it's possible that, that officers from ICE could show up at any building at any time and present what looks like a very official document that asks for some kind of information, and I, I don't want anyone to be put in a position where they feel like they have to hand something over that they're not legally required to do. The AGO has great guidance about not just having a know-your-rights training, but having a point person in every municipal building, and having that point person understand to call me as soon as they're presented with a legal document, because a civil, civil immigration detainer looks a lot like a judicial warrant, but they are not the same thing. It's also important to have this firm understanding of what is public space and what is private space in any, any municipal area. I do want to address the, the NADIC policy really quickly. I don't think that a policy is a good idea for a few reasons that I'll go through. First of all, what's in your packet is a draft and is not what was enacted by, by NADIC. What NADIC enacted at the end of last year is a slimmed-down version of what you have. And in the end, what they enacted was, what's in your packet is paragraph 2, 3, 6, and only the first line of paragraph 5. And what's left in the, the NADIC policy is simply a reiteration of already existing law. My advice always is that if you're going to create a policy, it should be something new and different to help guide a particular board in a way where that language doesn't exist already. When you're simply taking words out of the law that already exist and maybe translating them or simply superimposing them into another document, you risk misinterpreting it so that it can be interpreted different from how it actually exists in the law. Also, it's just a redundancy. Everything that's in the NADIC Select Board policy already exists in the law, and we're already required to follow that as a municipality. I would like to see guidance provided to every town employee about town employee rights and the rights of, the rights of employees who may be subject to an immigration detainer, but I, I don't know that a policy, a written policy document is required.
Yeah. I don't know if the chief will agree with me or not, but any, any call, any stop, any incident is very fluid, and things change, and pigeonholing the police department, at least, with, with a policy on how they do their job, I think is bad, personally. I think that they have a program, they're staying, again, in their lane, but I think anytime we add a policy that's so specific to something that is so fluid on a case-by-case, call-by-call basis restricts you guys. You guys know what to do and what not to do, in my opinion, and I would be, I would agree with Maura that I don't think at this point we need a policy to tell them how to do their job. They seem to have been doing it very well. With respect to public employees in here, guidance from their supervisors in the main office should be sufficient with, with indications of how they're supposed to respond or react to federal requests.
I think a training is absolutely critical. Training done, you know, really well, and then reinforced and done again is, is critical. And also, giving town employees the ability that when, if and when, and I know schools have run into this, I include a bunch of stuff in schools, if and when someone were to show up, ICE with some sort of detainer, to, every employee should have the ability to stop the conversation and to call you.
Absolutely.
Just say, "Thank you very much, why don't you stand over there, I need a moment," and do nothing but call you. I think it's really important, because I think, I think we try to, when someone asks us to do something, right? I think people go along and want to do what they're being asked, but in something like this, people really have to push the pause button and do nothing, and get guidance right away.
Maybe our policy at some point in the future is to direct department heads to instruct their employees, and, you know, in this issue and things like that, where we're taking, you know, the lead. I mean, I'm sure the town administrator and town manager feels the same way, but, you know, I think it might be something we might want to think about, just as to what our policy is, as to what department heads should be doing with their employees with respect to this issue, whether it's training, whether, you know, that I think is within the jurisdiction of what the town board is supposed to be doing. I think is within the jurisdiction of what the town board is supposed to be doing, setting that kind of policy.
And I was, I, I agree in premise, but I, I don't know that that needs to be a policy. I go back to that, that whether that needs to be a policy or whether we direct the town manager to make sure that these trainings are happening on a regular basis, that people know what they're supposed to do, and that it is a directive from their department head that you just push pause. You just, period, you push pause.
Yeah. I think, and I'll, I'll waiver on my, like, this needs to be a policy, because what I would be looking for, and I appreciate the not wanting to be redundant with what's already in law, right, and the potential to create confusion if we have a policy and there's a law. Anyway, what I'm looking for is formal guidance to all town staff and a clarification of that, and not just a, a word of mouth, and frankly, not for any reason of, of lack of trust, but not simply directing Mike to say, "Let's have a training," and everybody shows up to a training, right, and actually having formal guidance to all of our staff, that this is how the town is approaching this, this is what's expected in terms of your behavior, this is the support that you have from the town to do that.
That doesn't need to be.
That doesn't necessarily need to be a policy.
It could be a really good directive from the town manager and town council.
Madam Chair, maybe, maybe it wasn't.
Now, my back's to you.
No, maybe, maybe it wasn't clear. What I'm proposing is your town manager is to implement exactly what Maura was talking about in the AGO's presentation, and having those guidelines printed, published, and then, and then have those trained. So, it will be documented. That is the guideline, some got, written guidelines.
Absolutely.
I want no gray area. I want clarity on the part of all of the staff to understand, as Madam Chair mentioned, if they're confronted with the situation, I want them to know step by step, have a checklist, and, and ultimately, that ends with contacting town council's office. So, you hire me to run the day-to-day operations of the town. When I'm not doing that to, to the, the board satisfaction, then you find somebody else to do it. But that's an operational, I consider to be operational, in terms of guiding the staff. The decision to implement that guidance, wanted to kind of, you know, get that consensus from the board, but now that I think I have it, that's the step that we'll take.
I think our job is just to be the public face of the town. We're following the law. We're just, our policy is to start, stay with the guidance from the Attorney General's Office, and we just want our residents to know that that's the situation. We don't want people that are here who are unsure about their status to be afraid to call the police when something comes up, because that's the biggest concern I have, is somebody that's not sure where they're at. And these people, they really pay a lot of money to be here. You know, the immigration process is expensive. They pay $5,000 just to hire the attorney to help you navigate the process. And then you have to make payments as you go along to, you know, different application phases and so forth. It's not a simple thing, and there's a lot at stake for them. They've invested a lot to be here, and to be afraid to call the police because they haven't completed that process would be a shame.
We also have a responsibility to our constituency too, Doug, too, and there's a lot, I, I don't know if I have a different constituency than everybody else in the room, but nobody's even mentioned that. I have people that come to me that are concerned that there are people that are unvetted in the community, you know. I can't tell you how many calls I got once that, that article hit the paper. And they need to be, they need to be considered as well, and we haven't even discussed any of that. So, I, I may have a different opinion on this than everybody else, so we'll see.
Any other discussion?
I just, I see a lot of, I hear a lot of talk about construction, you know, being impacted by it. On the Vineyard, workers are afraid to go to work, because on big job sites, they're afraid that somebody's going to come around and ask for identification and so forth. So, they're, you know, it's an impact.
I own, I own a high-threat security company, and I'm privy to, to, to reports of violent acts that aren't publicly, uh, uh, broadcast, that, that are horrific. So, I mean, that works both ways on what's good for the community as a whole.
The Vineyard had an issue not too long ago where people didn't show up for work. They had sort of a nice scare. The schools were severely impacted. So, I think, I think we do, I agree, we have to look at the community as a whole. And I think in this one particular piece, in terms of when we get involved and when we don't, really needs to be clarified. And I think that's the crux of what, the direction that we need to give very clearly to the town manager, which I think he has. And a lot of it, a lot of the training comes right out of this. I mean, it's, you don't have to recreate anything. It's just putting it out there, training, retraining, and making sure that every employee in this town, because you, you've got to handle and increase the budget. I really believe that. We've got that. We've got to get everybody else on board. And I know the schools are doing their work as well.
Maura, am I correct, there was also another training that you had suggested from the municipal, Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association?
They, they held a webinar.
That's different than what's in our packet.
This, that is from one of the presenters, from, yeah, Assistant Attorney General Elizabeth Mattos put that together, and she spoke at the webinar.
At that webinar.
And I think there's a, I'll, if there's a recording of it, I will, I will.
Yeah, I mean, I, it, when I went to see it, it seemed to be only for the presentation. So, if there is a way to access the, the presentation, I couldn't, I couldn't make it. I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll send that recording around if I get it.
Thank you. Maura, you had also, though, mentioned the related issue in terms of staff training and private spaces and.
Yes.
Point people, that's around First Amendment assessors or auditors, right? And I went to that webinar as well. And I'm just curious, do we, are, like, are, are private spaces, I think they're supposed to be actually, like, there's supposed to be signage or public notice, right, that those are private spaces? Do we have that?
We, we do. It's a great, great question. We do. But what, what we, Peter and I will do is we'll meet with the department heads and, and have them inventory and just kind of assess to make sure they're still, still there. But as I go through day-to-day and look at the different departments and offices, certainly this building, I can, I can say that we're well-covered with regards to the signage. But we'll make a point to evaluate all the other facilities to make sure that they're in place.
Thank you.
That would be a very big deal in other, in other buildings, just when it's identified and noticed.
It's an important part of what we're talking about, having that designation.
Right, that's where you go.
Yeah. And I think especially for the immigration issues, ensuring that the Human Services Department has the training, the protocols, the spaces, as well as town halls. It's super important.
Any further discussions?
Chief.
Happy Saturday, everyone.
You get the lead.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you, Maura's helping us out with some, she's doing a great job, and you're in great hands with that town council there.
That's nice. Thank you.
It was great. Thank you.
And I think we've been clear about our direction for the town manager.
I don't think we need any formal.
Okay, I would agree. All right. So, we're going to move into the discussion on the proposed land acknowledgement policy. And I just want to give you a little bit of a background on this. So, Dr. Silva reached out to me, I would say maybe a month, maybe, like, more than a month ago, and asked me to take a look at this policy, and that at some point early spring, her request was to meet with the town manager and myself to go over this. And then the next step would be to make a public presentation at one of our general meetings to have a conversation about this. But prior to any of that happening, I thought it was really important to get a copy out to every board member, bring it up here at our workshop so that we could take a look at it. And if there's consensus, then I would move on to the next step, which would be to meet, and then the third step would be to put it on our agenda for a regular meeting. But the workshop here is, and I got it to you maybe two weeks ago, so that you would have an opportunity to really go over it and bring any questions or concerns to this meeting, so that we can talk about it before, before I moved on.
Yes, can, can you explain? I, I, the email from, from Dr. Silva was, you know, her proposal, or the, a proposed acknowledgement policy, and then there's suggested edits. Whose edits?
Those are mine. Yes.
Okay, I wanted to know. Yes.
This was the latest one we got. I think the red, the town council's edits.
So, it's the original and this suggested edits.
Yes.
From Maura, that, that's what we have.
That we need to be talking about today.
Correct. I mean, I, you know, I've only been here since 2016 on a full-time basis, but I thought I had seen somewhere that this had been brought up to town meeting, this issue of, of land acknowledgement policy. I mean, I may be completely off-base here.
No, it's come up before.
It has come up before.
Okay. And, and what has been the result of town meeting?
I'm trying to remember.
I mean, I don't think it passed. I mean, that's.
I think the original intent was that it was going to be read all the time at, like, every, every select board meeting or something. I don't remember what the occurrence was, but it was going to be, like, used all the time. And I think town meeting said, geez, you know, it's just.
I guess my question is, is this going to have to go to town meeting? I guess that's really what my question is. Or is this just something that you're thinking the select board will adopt as, as a policy?
I have no.
That's what I'm.
What I'm thinking, I'm seeing it in two ways, and I could be wrong, so please feel free to correct me. This was the proposed land acknowledgement that they want to read at every meeting and that kind of. This is a select board policy proposal. In some ways, I see that as different, because this policy has a lot more meat to it. It has a lot, it has what the town manager has to do. So, I, they're, they're similar, and this, I believe, is woven into this, but this is a policy that they're asking to be adopted.
Right. I guess, but my, my, my question really is, does it stop at the select board, or will this at some point in time need to go to town?
That's a fair question.
That's my only question. I mean, I, I understand.
Does the select board policy need to go to town meeting? I guess that would be my question.
Why did it have to go the first time? You know what I mean?
I don't know the history of it. That's, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want this to be, you know, viewed as, as us doing something and putting in place something that in the past, whether rightly or wrongly, or whether I would agree or disagree, you know, town, town meeting has spoken on it, and that's where I'm a little, you know, missing the, missing, missing the context of it. And I understand the, the larger document is what the policy would be, and has much more meat than just a statement. What Maura has edited is, would, would be just a, the statement that would be read.
Right, the land acknowledgement piece.
Yeah, whether it's by the select board or a direction to other committees. I mean, I know the 300 Committee has a, a policy. I think the schools, the schools have a policy. I was looking this morning, and a number of in-town organizations do, you know, make statements at the beginning of their, at the beginning of their meetings. So, okay.
I would certainly, I would certainly, before I, I moved on any of this, I would like to see what, what was presented at town meeting and what the circumstances were behind that, and how that aligns with what's being proposed now. You know, what we did, because nobody can remember what it was.
Let me, let me just go to Peter. Do you have any recollection?
So, it was a petition article.
Yep.
So, you know, and it didn't pass, and I think, you know, as well as I can remember it, I think Doug has characterized it accurately. You know, I, I think the question that Bob raises, you know, should really go to, to Maura. Just because a petition article brought something to town meeting doesn't mean that's legally required or even the best and most appropriate way to approach it. On the other hand, you know, so there's law and what's required, and then there's politics, right? So, anyone can bring anything to town meeting, and if they vote on it, that may be something that you want to take into consideration. So, to Scott's point.
Historically.
You know, even though it didn't have to go to town meeting, if it did go to town meeting and was voted down, that may be something politically that you want to consider.
So, where, where, where my thinking on, on this is, is around this being a policy. And I guess I have, I have questions there, because to me, this reads the, the land acknowledgement statement itself and, I don't know if debut is the right word, but kind of like a, a resolution from the select board around acknowledging the history of the town feels like perhaps one thing. And then, when I look at the proposed policy, this to me feels more like a strategic plan than a policy, right? It's, it's a set of action items. It's not ongoing guidance so much. And so, I, I guess I would welcome input on whether that kind of interpretation of what a policy is and what it should do sounds right to others, right? Because, like I said, this to me, I, the, the actions that are in here, I think many of them absolutely and fully support, and I would love to see us pursuing. It doesn't feel like policy guidance. It feels like action items. Really good point.
So, wouldn't it be prudent to, if, if there's interest in it, to advance it to an agenda item, so we could ask specific questions, and what the intent and, in other ramifications of it would be?
And, and get public comment, so that we can, you know, hear what the public wants to say about it. I'm certainly supportive of moving this, you know, to an agenda item.
That's what I want, that's what I need to hear. So, I think what, what we will do is the town manager and I will move forward with step two, which is to meet with a petitioner who's, who's guiding this, and then put it on as an agenda item. Because I, I agree that we need public comment, we need public input, but I really wanted to hear from this board to direct the town manager to move to step two, and then step three would be able to be on an agenda. So, I think I'm hearing that that's the way.
Yeah, it would allow us to be able to ask specific questions.
And also have, have more of a presentation that, that speaks to all of it. Okay. So, we will move forward and do that. And I will ask Diane to reach out to Sandy, because she was, is the one who's putting it forward, to meet with us and then get it on the agenda. All right. We're going to move on to discuss drafting a letter in opposition to Mass DEP proposed 50 million wastewater construction funding application cap included in the 2025 Clean Water State Revolving Fund Intended Use Plan.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, folks. Wait, is that one of your coats?
Coat jacket.
And there's something else there. Is that Terry's?
Dave Wasenowski is still here.
So, if you look in your packet, you will see a draft of a letter, Cape Cod and Island's Water Protection Fund, and you will also see a copy of a letter from the town of Yarmouth. And both Mr. Brown and I received this from.
Mark Forrest.
Mark Forrest.
Do we have a draft of a letter? I didn't see it in my packet unless the packet was up.
We, we, unfortunately, we, we do, but it unfortunately didn't make the publication date of the packet. So, I will, I will circulate that draft for review, and perhaps we can bring, I, I wanted to make one quick comment, because I just learned this, and, and the board may already be aware. There is a, a timeline for submitting comments, and that timeline, the third.
It's the third.
It's Monday.
March third.
It's Monday. So, so Madam Chair, actually, if, if you would allow me, and Peter, you might be able to print it, right?
Yes.
So, we did ask DPW Director McConerty and our wastewater superintendent, Amy Lowell, to draft a Falmouth, Town of Falmouth letter for the board's consideration, because of the, and I wasn't aware, quite honestly, of the, of the timeline, and it is March 3rd by the end of the day, I believe. So, it is going to be imperative that we, we get some guidance from the board. So, Peter's going to print a copy, and we'll circulate that, we'll circulate that around. But it, it, it follows the format of the Yarmouth letter and, and replaces the Yarmouth context and information with regards to their improvements that are planned and the impact it would have on their.
With our numbers.
Wastewater expansion with our numbers, in, in essence.
I mean, I don't know how far we're going to go with this, I mean, with or without the letter, but I certainly appreciate the context, you know, our context.
And as you all know, I can't recall the Yarm, well, the Yarmouth numbers are 200 million. We currently have April town meeting, the 60 million dollar expansion, and, and this cap, as you all know, proposed, would have, was out of a serious impact, you know, limiting local municipalities from, from borrowing, if you will, you know, more than 50 million dollars.
I, I turn to you, Doug, because I know you're, you know, more familiar with this whole issue, I think. I mean, it would seem to me that there should be some kind of a sliding cap based upon the population of the towns. I mean, Truro and Falmouth have the same cap, or at least on the, this, right now, there's no cap. Am I correct?
Correct.
Right? But I mean, if there was going to be a cap, you know, it would seem to me it should be some kind of a sliding cap. We shouldn't have the same cap as Truro has.
The cap is problematic for any town that's doing a first phase, because you cannot build a sewer plant and do a sewer planning area for 50 million dollars. You can't even do one of them.
No way.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, in the, in the grand scheme of dollars, it would seem to be that any cap should be, you know, related to the, the population or the outflow or whatever of, of the town. I mean, you know, I mean, why should Truro, I mean, if Truro wants to spend, you know, $50 million, you know, because that's the, you know, whatever it is, why, why, but their need is so much less, you know, than ours because of their population. I mean, it would just seem to me, I'm just talking off the top without doing a whole lot of research.
Not sure how that would work.
But it would seem to me that if there is going to be a cap, you know, it should somehow be based upon a particular town's outflow, whatever, that might give us, because, you know, they could take advantage of the cap. They go, okay, we've got a $50 million cap, we're going to go this way, whereas, and now we're constrained by the cap here. I'm just thinking about how it would work.
I attended a meeting on Wednesday with the undersecretary of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, Secretary Stephanie Cooper, and the room was pretty full, a lot of staff and elected officials. And everyone had the same, pretty much the same take that you can't ask us to sign up for watershed permits and move faster and then put the brakes on the funding. And so the idea, and Andy, Andy Gottlieb, I think made a really clear point that, you know, you're undermining the faith that the public has in the boards and the staff of towns because we've all said, you know, we're going to have this SRF funding, we're moving forward. Everyone seems to be kind of really picking up momentum right now. It's the worst time to put a cap on funding. So what was discussed was that if there really is a budget shortfall and they really can't maintain the program as they have, at least keep it moving for this year. And then if we have to take a little break next year, at least we'll know about it. We'll do other things. We won't promise sewer projects. We'll build police stations or do whatever, you know, other things that we need to do. So we're not looking like, you know, one hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. So that was what, undersecretary, I think, got the biggest message was that we need to keep projects moving that are in the pipeline now. And let us know what's going to happen if the 2027 budget has to be adjusted. Let's at least know what to plan for.
Especially with the threat of federal funding.
Doug, maybe you, no. One thing that I found a little confusing reading the stuff in our packet and then going, digging around state websites. It's a 50 million annual cap, right? 50 million per year, but also layers in that you have to reapply every year, right? Not that I want there to be a cap at all, but I guess to me, it's that annual reapplication that's even more problematic than the annual cap.
I agree.
Right? If there were, you could have a larger project, but it was going to be doled out at 50 million a year. Not great, maybe doable if you could actually plan for.
You could count on it.
You know, exactly. If you could, if you could apply for five years. That, that annual refiling to me seems really, so, and I, but I don't know if I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah, I can offer a little bit of clarification on that. So I'll just talk about the way it works now and, you know, and how that's different from what's proposed. So right now, if there are a couple of, yeah, so right now, if you put in a plan and you get it approved on the I U P, the Intended Use Plan, right, you are often at the preliminary design phase, so you're dealing with estimates. So it, it's not uncommon to say, we have a $40 million project and it comes in at 45. And you're approved on the I U P for 40, it comes in on 40, at 45, and it's automatically included. You don't have to reapply. But I also want to mention, the way, the form, that the, the way the money comes in, it's not annual slugs of money. It's actually, it's, what you're applying for is the low interest loan, right? So it comes over the life of the 20, 30-year loan anyway. So, so the, so the piece that's really different now, right, is that there's been a $50 million limit. So in the past, you have a $75 million project, and okay, you have $50 million worth of borrowing that you can do the first year. And then if, if, assuming you don't have to reapply, and it's almost automatic, that that $25 million extra is going to be awarded the following year, as I understand it. I haven't had the experience of going through that. But what's different now is they're saying, you know, 50 is it, and you're not getting any more. As I understand it.
Don't ask Mora anything right now. She's preoccupied.
Should we take a moment to take a look?
And again, I apologize, this did not make your packets, but yes, Peter just did, thank you, Peter, for running copies, just did distribute copies of two letters that were drafted by, again, DPW Director McConerty and Wastewater Superintendent Lowell.
So you should have one addressed to Governor Healy and the other addressed to Robin McNamara, active director of municipal services.
So, I mean, the letter that's in our packet from Yarmouth only went to Ms. McNamara. I mean, are towns also writing the governor, or is this our idea to also write the governor? I mean, I'm just curious if other towns have taken the step of writing to the governor as well. It seems like a good idea. I'm just wondering what other, what other towns have done.
Yet Doug has, has similar done anything?
Yes, we did send a letter.
I missed your question.
Of Cape Cod Islands municipal leaders, the group as a whole have done it.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, I, did, did Mr. Gottlieb's association submit anything to the governor's office?
I believe they did.
There's some emails floating around and, and the Association for the Protection of Cape Cod, I always get the acronym wrong. I do recall seeing an email floating around, and I believe that entity circulated a letter to the governor's office. Bob, I don't recall seeing a municipality submitting a letter to the governor's office.
Like I said, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea.
It would make sense if we're, you know, if what we're looking for is, you know, both, you know, added weight to prevent this proposed change from being implemented, and then the, the solution that's being proposed of a bond bill to, to fund, to provide more funding for the SRF.
That's Gottlieb's idea.
That's going to need the governor's approval, right?
And the county commissioners also sent a letter similar to the Yarmouth letter.
When we say without advanced notice, I mean, when, I mean, there has been obviously advanced notice. It just hasn't been a lot of advanced notice, right? I mean, I mean, I'm just questioning when, when we actually, when it was actually published for comment, I guess is my question.
I don't have the exact dates, but it's a good question. I, I do know, in reading some of the comments and emails from either the county level or some municipal dialogues that were floating around, that the, the time period for, for comment, public comment, was a bit restricted, and the notification that this was, that this proposal was under consideration was a little bit buried, a little bit difficult to find. That was my, that's my recollection, so.
Sometimes is when they want to.
Exactly. My thinking on the without advanced notice was a little different. I would like to check my understanding. I mean, given all of that, even if it were very out in the open, and this is the public comment period, my understanding is they're talking about this applying to this year, right? So there'd be public comment, they would enact it, and it essentially goes into immediate effect, which does, we're planning 20-year projects and applying for funding for two, three, five years out to find out in 2025 that there's going to be a change in the funding system as of 2025.
It doesn't give those jurisdictions that are multi-year projects any event, you're, there's probably a big part of it.
Like even if, even if all the public comment were totally out in the open, that seems like a really.
I, I think that's a terrific point because, you know, where, Falmouth does not happen to be in this situation, but I believe both Yarmouth and Barnstable have projects over 100 million that were just recently approved on the assumption that they were going to be SRF eligible for the full amount. And that's what they communicated to the public was the funding plan.
And Mashpee too? They're just now building a sewer plant. I don't know what their budget is, but.
Same thing with the tip stuff. The federal money is weird. I mean, they change the rules daily, how they, how they distribute money.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Falmouth case that's in here is a really good one, right? This is 2025 I U P, $50, 50 million executed with the understanding that there would be 10 million the next year. And if that's changing sometime in the next few months, we, like, we'll be past April Town Meeting. We don't have a way to fix that for '26.
Like I just said, Doug, though, keeping in mind that there may be federal money being withheld for other reasons, that they'd go right after stuff like this.
Well, it's state. Oh, it's federal money too.
Federal money to the state.
Well, also, they don't, not widely publicizing it, but there was a big mistake made by the previous governor using HARPA funds to fund budgets that weren't legal. And now there's a $2 billion shortfall that they're trying to.
That was in the unemployment, that was under the unemployment.
So they're trying to patch up a $2 billion hole, and Governor Healy did negotiate a 10-year payback, but it's going to hurt the budget for 10 years. That's what they thought they were going to do, and now they're scrambling to cover it. So it's affecting a lot of stuff.
Any other comments on these letters? Because I, I hate to put you guys under the gun, but they are due by the 3rd, so I'm hoping to come out of here with a note.
I think the letter's fine.
I have a few comments, at least with respect to the letter to the governor. You know, where we say in the very first sentence, Peter, and I, the third line, "to make dramatic changes to the clean water funding program that Falmouth and all of the other Cape towns are counting on." I mean, I always hesitate to lump us, you know, in with what, what everyone else is necessarily, I, I would just say, "and what we believe all of the others count." I mean, I don't want to, you know, be making an affirmative statement, or I don't think, you know, we should make an affirmative statement. I think we could say our understanding, we believe, however you might want to, you know, to phrase it.
Couldn't we just take, strike "and" and go right to "Falmouth is counting on to fund?"
And not mention the other towns?
I'd say either that or many. I mean, I feel like the "I believe, we believe", like, makes it sound like we don't actually know what's going on in surrounding towns.
But we don't. But we really don't. That's my point, Heather. I mean, yeah, we know, you know, from reading in the paper or Doug's involvement, we know what Mashpee's doing, we know what Barnstable's doing, but, but we really don't know what they're doing. And I don't see that it affects our letter one way or the other. I think it's just a more accurate statement of where we're coming from. I mean.
You know it's going to have an impact on them, and that's what the letter says.
Well, I mean, so you could also, so I don't feel strongly about this either way, whether it just says that Falmouth or that Falmouth and other Cape towns. Just drop the "all."
Yeah, I mean, you know.
We know it's affecting Yarmouth because we've seen their letter.
Right, we definitely, yeah.
Fair enough.
I don't think it's accurate to say "all."
Yep, fair enough.
Whether it's that or "we believe."
No, I, I think that makes perfect sense.
In the second, second paragraph, if I understood what you were saying correctly, where it says, "and to prevent any dollars," is it really to prevent any borrowing as opposed to dollars? Am I understanding how the program works?
So first of all, point of clarification, this was drafted by Amy Lowell.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, that's, and I understand it was done quickly, but, you know, but.
Any funds?
Any funds? I mean, because later on, or at least in the letter to Ms. McNamara, we're using funding rather than actual dollars.
Yeah, change that to funds. Yeah, that's fine.
Last, second to the last sentence in that paragraph, do we want to highlight that we have 14 coastal embayments that, that are being, you know, the most on Cape Cod?
I kind of had the same thought.
You know, I think maybe we want to put that in our letter.
I think we should call ourselves out.
Highlight, you know, that, that it affects us probably because of so many embayments that we have.
Probably more than any other town.
Exactly. And it highlights that. It calls us out. I think that's important.
So is that a new, a new sentence?
Well, no, I think it could, you could keep the sentence, let's see, the towns finding for Roy's probably.
Okay, and also without any advanced notice, maybe that should be without significant.
I would say sufficient. I would say sufficient. Yeah, that's, that's, that's more accurate.
You catching that last paragraph, third paragraph?
The towns, you know, the towns, the last sentence, maybe you could incorporate somewhere along, "the town's wastewater plans, which deal with the, you know, the 14 embayments that we have, the most, in parentheses, the most on Cape Cod."
Yeah, how about, we're just re, continuing on in that sentence, "the town's wastewater plans are designed to remove nitrogen from our sensitive coastal areas," we can say, "from our."
Yeah, that's where I had it actually. 14 sensitive.
Yes, 14.
And then in parentheses, we can say, "the most on Cape Cod."
Yes.
The other thing that, that stood out to me in those, in that last sentence of that paragraph is the way it reads right now, and not that I don't want us to be ambitious leaders and going beyond minimums, but it reads like this is an optional thing that we are deciding to do. This is mandated.
Well, we volunteered to do the watershed permits.
Right.
Bourne isn't doing that. They're going to leave their customers to just deal with D E P themselves. So it is.
It's not really a viable option or a good option, but theoretically, what the state did is they said, this is not a state mandate. You don't have to file, you don't have to obtain a watershed permit. You can just force everyone to put in IAs.
That was our, that was our fulcrum on that, that we did have that option before when we decided to do the initial I, the IA thing in the beginning, wasn't it? Didn't we vote something that?
We voted, yeah, we, we notified the Department of Environmental Protection that we intend to file watershed permits.
And that's what we used as the fulcrum to not be lumped into, this is just the way it is.
Right.
I mean, forgive me for not remembering the exact.
Yeah, so it, it prevents.
But I know that.
It prevents the mandate of IAs for every property in the watershed from being, going into effect, I think.
And that's how we protected ourselves from it.
Right.
And you weren't on the, I don't think you were on the board for that discussion, so.
I mean, basically, you know, I'm understanding the, the need to get it done. The, the letter to Ms. McNamara is essentially Yarmouth's letter with our numbers and proposed.
Okay, can I, can we just, did we make all the edits we need to on the letter to the governor? Can we just?
And in the last paragraph, to the place where all Cape Cod communities are mentioned, to also change that to just other Cape Cod communities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can move to the other letter. Are we ready?
I'd also see the lieutenant governor, just for the heck of it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Bob, so I didn't mean to interrupt you, but go ahead with the letter to Ms. McNamara.
You know, I mean, I don't want to completely wordsmith the next letter. I think, you know, I read over Yarmouth's letter, it seemed to, you know, encapsulate what we wanted to do.
In my direction was to, to, to use the Yarmouth letter as a template, quite honestly.
In my direction was to, to, to use the Yarmouth letter as a template, quite honestly, because it was time-sensitive. What do you have with any of those?
We did not lawyers do that all the time. We take what somebody else did and just, you know, change the names.
Of course you do. No need to reinvent the wheel, is what I always say.
Exactly. One, one question I did have on the first paragraph, it specifically calls out the elimination, eliminating the carryover provision, but does not call out the $50 million funding cap? And that's maybe because the.
It sort of does in the middle of the paragraph.
Later down with.
It says, "however, under DEP's new policy, the town cannot count on SRF remaining, for the remaining 10 million." So implicitly, it references it. But you're right, it doesn't explicitly identify that the cap is 50 million.
Yeah, I guess I would just, that first sentence, you know, grave concerns about changes, which cap per applicant funding at 50 million and eliminate the carryover provisions.
Good. Yeah, that's good.
Yep, I like it.
Which.
Cap funding at 50 million annual.
Yep.
When's the circuit be in again?
Monday.
Yes.
What's today?
Saturday, the first, yeah.
That leaves what, tomorrow's Sunday?
We'll get it via email.
We'll do it via email, and then we'll do a hard copy. Any other edits? Or do you need more time? Just, we have plenty of time, so.
Yeah, a couple minutes, that's.
Yep, go ahead.
I guess I, I like Bob's suggestion from the first letter of working in there somewhere, you know, we, this is a much more operational letter, and I get that we're focusing on the immediate impact of changes in 2025 to the Great Pond, but getting in there somewhere that, this is the, the first of 14. So this is not just a, this project issue.
Well, not the first.
Second.
One of, yeah, one of, one of the 14 that remains to be addressed.
Yeah, that have to be addressed.
Insert that sentence in the governor's letter, "town's wastewater plans are designed to remove nitrogen," 14 sensitive.
I do think, I have a suggestion. In that paragraph.
Which one?
Which one, Bob?
The first paragraph. The, the sentence that says, "the Great Pond Phase 1 project included the 2025 IUP for $50 million, actually $60 million project that the town, we say, was assuming."
Mm-hmm.
I think we could make that stronger and say that the town relied upon.
Depended on, mm, I thought the same thing.
Depending upon prior practice.
I think we can say present tense, because as of this moment, it's about to go to town meeting.
That's true.
So is relying on.
Or depending on.
Yeah, depending, relying, whatever, but.
Yep, either one I'd go with.
Is reliant.
Yeah.
Is relying upon to cover.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And I would even say based on prior, you know.
Yeah, based on, based on current policy.
On current policy, exactly.
I'm, I'm going to, so this letter was drafted by Yarmouth, and they, I think they have a $200 million project that's on the IUP. I, I don't know if, I'm just thinking about what the realistic options that the state has. And, you know, I think long-term, we know the goal is we need more money going into the pot. Otherwise, there won't be enough money to fund all these projects. But in the interim, that money's not there today, and the state may need to make an uncomfortable decision. And I think we still want to push for this change, but I wonder if we want to characterize it a little differently in terms of the listed demands. So there may need to be a cap. And I think sort of Heather may have been sort of alluding to this.
Or a pause. That was something that was, a lot of heads were nodding when they said, "if you have to take a pause for a year, tell us. Re, reallocate funds, and then we'll plan for the following year."
How does that hurt you in a queue, though? I mean, if you remove yourself willingly out of something?
I don't know. Just saying, it was just something that came up, and, and the undersecretary was like, hmm, might be something they might come back with.
You know what I'm saying, though. We really don't need it.
Right.
50 million.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a, I don't have a quick, easy answer. So my, I guess my question is, do we, do we want to just soften it a little bit, instead of rescind, rescind the cap, you know, maybe rescind or raise the cap? I mean, 50 million is pretty low, but if they had to, had to cap it at 100 in order to sort of equitably meet needs of all communities.
That's my point right, right there. I mean, Yarmouth's looking for $200 million. They're smaller than, than we are, and all we want is 60.
Right, right. And, yeah, I think Yarmouth, Barnstable, and Mashpee are the three that have really big projects.
I guess, I don't know, this is negotiation tactics, but we don't want there to be a cap. If there has to be a cap, we want it to be higher. I think if we ask for no cap and they say.
Come back.
Yeah.
They can, they can come to the, like, everybody's throwing a fit. Maybe the cap needs to be higher. Maybe they can come to that on their own instead of us opening the door to that.
Maybe the cap should be 250 million. I'm sure nobody's asking for less money.
And I disagree with softening it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Like, I, I think.
Okay.
I say we ask for everything.
They can come to a higher cap on their own.
Yeah.
What's the worst they could do?
We ask for everything.
Have there been discussions with our state reps or any of that, Doug? I mean, has, have they been brought into the discussion?
That's too fast.
This literally got shot over to us two days ago. And we were lucky that we were having this workshop, otherwise we would have had to call something else.
So if there are no other edits, and some of, some of you may still be looking at it, Peter and I will go ahead. Peter's captured the comments and the edits, and we'll go ahead and get this out via email first thing Monday morning, and follow up with a, we'll get it to the respective parties.
Do we need to vote it? I thought so. And it does say that we can vote appropriate action on any item listed, even though it's not listed as a vote. So I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll motion the formulation of, of this, these letters as described by the town manager to be distributed by Monday noon time?
Or by Monday end of day, end of business day? Is it proposed that we're going to each be listed on the letter like Yarmouth was, or is this going to become from Nancy as far as actually?
Yeah, I was going to ask, you know, one of the, one of the ways, another, maybe another edit to the letter, one of the ways to sort of make it clear is to put in the letter that it was voted unanimously on X date.
Yeah.
But then it can be signed by, you know, either by the town manager or by Nancy.
The resolution is to direct, you know, direct the chair and the town manager to sign the letter.
Yep.
It was unanimous to approve the letter.
Right.
Approve the letter as to direct, yeah, to direct the town manager.
Have our signature stamp, right?
We do, yeah, that's another option.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it might look better if we all.
I like, I like it when it's spelled out with everyone's names.
Yeah, I can sign the physical.
I would agree, and so can I. I can do whatever you need.
And we can also use the stamp. That's the, if there's a vote behind it.
Stamp, man.
Yeah.
Because I won't be here by that time.
The stamp, okay.
Yeah, that, that's my motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the motion moves with the edits, correct?
Yeah.
And with sending out that it has been approved by the unanimously voted on today's date and with all signatures.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, folks, and sorry, that was quick. Yeah, let's take, we'll take five minutes. Let's bring this meeting back to order after just a seven-minute recess, and we're going to look at business item number five, discussion and update on the use of municipal funding for IA systems. And I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Johnson-Staub and Attorney O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the board is aware, we, about a year ago, we started looking at potential funding for innovative alternative septic systems as part of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. The same issue relates to urine diversion. And the question that was raised was, is it an appropriate use of municipal funds to subsidize an improvement on private property? So, you know, in this case, private property where a septic system would be improved to remove nitrogen as a required part of a watershed permit to be filed in order to comply with Title V of the state's wastewater regulations. And the, the initial review of that with an attorney of the day, there was, there was a detailed email sent and a conversation with former finance director Ed Santeo with the attorney of the day at the Department of Revenue indicating that no, because the improvements were on private property, that it was not a, a public purpose, and it was not a proper use of municipal funds. And Attorney O'Keefe looked at the matter as well and came to the same conclusion. We have since been discussing this with other municipalities, and I initiated a meeting with, through the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, so with the chair of the, of the management board of that fund and staff to the fund from the Cape Cod Commission, we arranged a meeting with representatives of the State Revolving Fund and the Department of Environmental Protection to raise this question. Because from, you know, from our perspective, there is a public purpose, right? These watershed regulations are all about a public purpose. And the state has, the Department of Environmental Protection has indicated very clearly that one tool, one mechanism that you can use to comply with those watershed permits is enhanced nitrogen removal for septic systems. So there is a case to be made that there is a public benefit when a, an individual homeowner puts a nitro, nitrogen removing septic system on their private property. The State Revolving Fund did confirm in this meeting, and Attorney O'Keefe was at this meeting as well, they did confirm that they have determined that IAs is an eligible use of state revolving funds. So that's very helpful in making the case. And the Department of Environmental Protection representative that was at that meeting concurred. So that's really moving us a lot closer to a comfort level that, that we would not be successfully challenged about the use of municipal funds. We, we would really like to nail this down by getting a letter from the Department of Revenue. So that is a piece that we are still working on. The representative from the State Revolving Fund did say he was going to reach out to a contact at the Department of Revenue. I have not heard back on that follow-up yet. And I will be following up with the Lieutenant Governor's office as well. I had a very brief conversation with, with Sarah Peake, who's now staff to the Lieutenant Governor about this matter. And I'll be reaching out to her to see if she can assist with that as well. And that is all I have. I don't know if.
That was great. I don't know, so I guess I'll just add the legal foundation for the original concerns that both Ed Santeo and I raised about whether this is a proper expenditure of municipal funds. The, the legal foundation is, comes from the anti-aid amendment of the Constitution. And there are a couple citations, a couple of different citations to the Constitution. It's not just, it's not just, there's one part, Section 18 of the Constitution that talks, that is specifically called out as the anti-aid amendment. But everyone always forgets that there's a second citation also. The anti-aid amendment states that no grant or appropriation of public, public money or a loan of credit can be authorized by any municipality for the purpose of founding or maintaining or aiding. And then it lists a whole bunch of nonprofit organizations or religious organizations. But this, the anti-aid amendment needs to be coupled with a different section of the law, which is Article 7, which states that government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people, and not for the profit, honor, or private interest of any one man, family, or class of men. So reading these together, there's one legal resource that municipal attorneys always cite to when this question arises, whether municipal funds can be spent on a particular purpose. And it's a document called municipal expenditures, proper public purposes. And it's issued from, it's in your packet, it's issued by Attorney Mitchell from the Municipal Finance Law Bureau. It's from 2006. The law has not changed, and it is relied upon by every municipal attorney in the Commonwealth when this question comes up. And I just want to point you towards the first page of that document where it talks about public purpose limitations. And it very explicitly says that public funds cannot be used for private purposes. Cities and towns have the right to spend money for any purpose where the public good will be served, but not where the expenditure of money is directly for the private benefit of certain individuals. So what's happening here from a legal standpoint is that I am not yet convinced, but I'm very close to being convinced, that the public purpose of the expenditure of these funds supersedes the, the private purpose. Here, where the money would go, it's, it's proposed to go to support, it would be given to private landowners to be able to construct on their own property improvements to their private property that would benefit them. But you take a step back, and there's an overarching public purpose where we all know, we have had this conversation a million times, that we are in a crisis right now with our watersheds and with nitrogen loading. And part of being able to solve this purpose for the, for the, this problem that we're having for the entire community is this piece of it, this piece with being able to help homeowners with building their IA funds. There's a very good argument that there's a public purpose here, but I just want, I just want the DOR to sign off on it. So we're almost there, not quite. And my hesitation here in saying 100% this, this is okay, this doesn't violate the anti-aid amendment, it comes from a risk assessment standpoint. There, if municipalities spend money that is not for a public purpose, there is what's called a ten taxpayer lawsuit, where 10 taxpayers could sue the town to, it's essentially an injunction, to stop the town from spending the money. And I don't know that what I have here is enough to win that lawsuit yet. I think we're close, but I just want, I just want someone at the DOR to say, "go ahead."
May I ask you maybe a dumb question, but if we adopt that approach to that language, right, what, what is the, how do you identify to what person's private property constitutes what's in the language? Because what if, what if you need a roof on your house and it's, you know, you can't afford it, but it's a public safe, it's, it's a private safety hazard or whatever. How do you differentiate between legitimacy and, or, you know, where do you draw the line? And if that is even a coherent question, but.
Yeah, no.
The first thing that it, that came to my mind is, does this create some kind of precedence by, by the way the, by the way it's read, by whoever?
That's a great question, and that's part of why I, I have stood so firmly here, because I don't want the decision that the town is making right here to open a door to anyone saying, "well, if you're providing municipal funds to private homeowners so that they can adhere to the law about DEP regulations and select board policies about the requirement to, to build an IA." the requirement to, to build an IA, then why can't I have municipal funds to put a railing on my deck because that's, that's-
Or replace my shingles or lead paint or any of that.
This is why, this is-
I have a suggestion, though.
Well, so, I just want to just finish that sentence and then, and, so, this is why, if, what I'm looking for from the DOR is something that limits to these facts and to this particular purpose and say, yes, because it is, the DEP has already said it's an eligible project under, for SRF funds. Now, if we can just get some kind of guidance from the DOR saying, for this limited purpose, you can do this.
And I'm not trying to poo-poo this because I believe in this part of it. I just don't want to open Pandora's box or create some kind of opening of Pandora's box, saying, well, if you did it for this, why can't we do it for that?
Go ahead, Doug.
So, in Falmouth and other towns, the towns have provided grinder pumps on private property.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That is probably a pretty good example of the, the state turning, choosing to look away and just say, that may not have been 100% appropriate, but it's effective. Now, we got another situation where there's a mandate of IAs or sewerin. The town always cooperates and works with the homeowners to do the sewerin. That's a standard practice. But what if the town were to be the one to purchase the IA box? It's, there's two parts to a septic system. You have the standard tank, and you have the denitrifying tank, which is often can be an added feature to an existing system, if you have the room, and the piping can be manipulated in a way-
And the height.
Pardon me?
And, and the height for it.
Yeah, exactly. So, maybe in half the cases, it might work. You know, in another case, you might have to move the tank or something. But what if the town specifically created a program to purchase these units and provide them to the homeowner and do the monitoring? So, it takes it off their plate. We're providing it to them. And even if we don't relinquish ownership, maybe they give us a license to place it on their property, and the town owns it and maintains it. I think that would be a specific purpose that you wouldn't be opening any kind of Pandora's box because it's just one specific-
How do you pay for it? How do you pay for the monitoring and the-
We would have to fund it the way we fund sewerin. We'd have to get a debt exclusion and take it to town meeting and take it to the voters. And if the voters vote for it townwide, then who's to say that it's not a fair use of town funds?
So, I think we've explored all options on this. What you're talking about, it would need an easement, not a license. Getting an easement from a private property owner, that's difficult sometimes. But if there's a benefit in return, it's sometimes easier. But the, the problem is that, that's, is the ownership and continuing maintenance of, of an ex- what is essentially an extension of the sewer system on private property. We certainly could, I could craft an agreement for, that would talk about liability and ownership, ownership rights and maintenance obligations for all of the homeowners that would be involved. That is a huge undertaking for the town.
Uh, Madam Chair?
And it's something that the DPW has expressed that they cannot, nor do they want to do. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I know that when I was installing microfast systems, there, there was a monthly inspection on it because of, when we were putting them in as microfast systems, they were two compartment tank, right? But there was monthly inspections, and then they were by, by annual overall inspections and then service. I just, i- i- and if those fees on an individual basis were astronomical, I just don't know how we would sustain the workforce for that and, and the money to do that and just housing all that information. You know what I mean? And then enforcing it if it's not being done. Because a microfast will run without working. The, the key to the micro, just the microfast system is, it'll continue to run, just like a regular system until it fails, but the system will still run. It just won't remove the nitrogen.
Right. And that's why we need effective monitoring. And the testing center is making a program where they'll do the monitoring. So, we won't have to have our staff doing the monitoring. That's already being in the works. They know that this program is needed. And then, right now, half the, or more, I don't know how much the percentage, but a lot of the systems that are in place aren't really working because they're not being properly maintained.
I thi- I think that a, a, a great possibility would be if we were going to support something like that, any new commercial construction or, uh, uh, projects that we, we get behind, that should be part of the deal to help with that. You know what I'm saying?
Even though if we make it part of the deal, that doesn't mean that it's going to be properly maintained unless you have a systematic-
If it's part of your, your special permit, it would be. I mean, that's a part of the-
Mr. Goldstone and then Mr. Muskele, go ahead.
It feels like two different, two different discussions here, to some extent, obviously linked. Obviously, to accomplish the goal of nitrogen reduction, we need to make sure that whatever gets installed works on a long-term basis. I get that. To me, I think the more immediate issue with the scope of IA installations that we're currently looking at for our watershed permits is trying to help homeowners with an enormous cost that, in my mind, is overwhelmingly for public benefit, right? It, I mean, I won't comment on whether it would, you know, whether it would stand up in court. But to me, there's a very clear difference between we require your deck to be safe for you and the people who are on your deck versus we require you to put less nitrogen into our common environment. Those are very different things. And it's a really enormous cost. And so, figuring out how to bring that cost down and share the, equitably share the cost of what is a public good across our, our taxpayers and our town is the issue.
I would agree.
I, I agree.
Mr. Muskele, and then to-
I mean, we, we've got to find a way to fix this and help, help, help the community fix it. You know, I mean, we, we, the town, when I say, I mean, we bear some responsibility in this, you know, in this, in this whole situation. I mean, the, the town has developed to what it is because people have been putting these kinds of systems in, and we've been approving building permits and COs and, you know, and we've benefited from it. And I think it's difficult for us to now lay the entire burden, you know, on the homeowner. I think the town has a certain place to, to fill, wherever that place may be. But I, this is my question, and maybe you could help me through it, is let's take a typical homeowner and a typical IA system that becomes necessary for one reason or another. We're waiting for the Board of Health's regulations, you know, to see where they come out. But let's say you've got a $40,000 system, and you've got someone on reasonably, you know, you know, income, set income, a pensioner, social security, you know, not a heck of a lot of money in the bank. How does that person right now, you know, what's available to that person other than that person's going to the bank and borrowing money or taking money out of their retirement account or whatever? What right now is available to that person to get them to that $40,000? How does it work?
A county loan program.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm, that's, that's what I'm asking. I mean, we hear a lot about it. But I'd like to know exactly what, what we're talking about, if we can.
Sure. So, you know, I want to be very specific about, you know, right now, there are very few existing homes that are going to be required to put in an IA, right? So, I don't even know that the question has ever arisen. But if you're asking tomorrow, you know, some point in the future after a watershed permit with mandated IAs is adopted, is that your question?
Essentially.
Like, not today, but when?
Not, yeah.
Okay. So, so then the answer is, there, there are two avenues. There's a county septic loan program, and there is a state septic tax credit.
That was for Title V, though, wasn't it? Or was that for IAs?
It's been expanded now.
The, um, right. It has been expanded, and we do have a letter, there's a letter in your packet-
Okay, good.
-from the Department of Revenue confirming that not just for all septic systems, but specifically connected to a watershed permit. If a nitrogen-reducing septic upgrade is required as part of a watershed permit, then it is eligible for the state income tax credit.
And that's what we're trying to get so that it's, 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 it's applicable to everybody regardless of their income tax liability.
Right. It's not deductible, but to the extent they're paying taxes.
Just free or something.
We're asking for the $18,000 tax credit to be made refundable. Because if you're a very low-income person, you might pay very low tax. And if you only got a few years to write it off, you might not get the credit.
Right. So, there's the county loan program and the state income tax credit. How does the county loan program work?
Um, it is a, I believe it's a low-interest loan that you apply for. And again, it has to be, you know, I don't, I don't believe it's, you would be eligible for new construction. But if you're replacing a septic system that's failed-
Somebody's system fails, and now rather than spending, you know, X amount to do what I've always done in the past and what we've allowed people to do in the past, now they have to do an IA system that's going to cost them double X, right?
Right.
How do they fund the difference between X and, and double X? That's essentially what we're asking.
Yeah. So, they, so the county doesn't provide the principal.
Right.
Right? It just provides a, a loan.
Okay. Now, I mean, is, and, and it's low interest, and it's over a period of time, and, you know, and that's, but, I mean, does everyone qualify for that loan regardless of income?
Yes.
I defer to Doug. I'm, I'm not really-
I have a customer who's using it right now and building a million-dollar house, and they used it because it's low-cost.
Okay. I mean, I was thinking more that makes, I mean, somebody's building a million dollars, I mean, obviously, they would, they qualify for a loan. I'm thinking of the person on limited income.
Oh, would they quali-
Would they be, would they be able to get-
Qualify for that.
The, the loan. That's my question.
I, I don't want to speak to that. I'm not-
Yeah. So, I mean, I think those are the kinds of questions we need to, you know, or, or, you know, I think people want to know the answers to. Okay, it's great, there's a program. Is it automatic? Do I have to qualify? You know, I mean, it's stuff like that. To actually get down to the, you know, to the, to the nitty-gritty on, on these questions.
Yeah. And that ties into what I was wanting to say earlier, which is, we are a long way from being able to come to you and say, here's our, here's our plan for funding IAs. If, you know, once, once we get over that hurdle, assuming we do get over the hurdle, that we feel it is a, a legal use of municipal funds, we, I, I don't want anyone to come away from this conversation thinking the plan is that the town is going to fund 100% of all, of all IAs. Because I don't think that is within our, you know, it's certainly not something that I would propose, and it would, it would be funded through, you know, a debt exemption that is going to have a tax impact on everybody. So, that's a complicated question that is, you know, that we're going to have to do a deep dive on. And, you know, and what we're, some of the factors we're going to be looking at are, you know, there's a benefit to everybody to clean up our estuaries, right? So, there's a public benefit. And that, and then there are equity questions around, for example, what are the folks that are required to connect to a sewer? What are they paying? You know, so they're, they're paying a betterment, they're paying a connection fee, and then they're paying annual maintenance costs. And those, you know, we were looking at those numbers just yesterday, the Finance Director, Wastewater Superintendent and I, for this next project. And I'm hesitant to quote a number, but it's, you know, it's well in excess of $30,000 for the betterment. And so, if that's the betterment cost that the homeowner's paying, you know, we may want to look at that as a rough equivalency to, you know, we're not going to pay 100% of IAs, but, you know, do we peg it to that betterment? Or, you know, but, and we want to consider maintenance costs, you know, we want to put the whole thing in, look at affordability, look at the loans that are available, because that's a significant piece as well, look at the tax credit that's available, and then come back with a plan about what we think might be a reasonable subsidy.
So, I have a question. So, if the mandate goes through, how, what is your estimate of the number of homeowners who would have to install an IA?
That's a good question.
Do you have any, because if you're talking about how much it's going to ca- cost in totality, I need to know how many?
Yeah.
How many homes? That's my first question. My second, my second point is, I want to go back to something Heather said. I cannot believe that protecting our water and the public benefit of that cannot supersede the private purpose. I just, I don't see how that is possible when it comes to water. So, I'm hoping we can, we can move forward on that. But, but my question is, I'd like to know the number of homes.
There's 22,000 homes in Falmouth, and more than half, I mean, significantly more than half are in one watershed or another. I'm going to take a guess and say it's maybe 15,000.
15,000.
70%. I mean, that's-
Something like that.
That's where it breaks out, to 70% is 14,000, 15,000.
So, there, I'm looking at a presentation that Christian Rathgen gave to the Water Quality Management Committee, 18,400 parcels in nitrogen-sensitive areas. But the plan is to create boundaries within those nitrogen-sensitive areas for mandatory IAs. So, it would not be all of those.
Geoboundings.
Wouldn't be all of them. And also, that includes the sewered sections, where sections to be sewered, like in Seacoast is 2,000, you know, in those other estuary, you probably got 6,000 or 7,000 that are going to be on sewer.
5,000 is sewored, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Related to that, I guess I would be interested. I don't expect anybody to have this answer at their fingertips at the moment. But with things like, um, both the septic tax credit and the county septic loans, having been established, my understanding, for kind of the routine people need to repair, replace, upgrade septics, not for necessarily this kind of thousands of IAs needed in a confined period of time, are either of those mechanisms set up for, prepared for that escalation in, in demand? Or are we going to hit a point where they say, we're, we're out of money, right? We were used to doing, I don't know what it is, a few dozen, 100 or so of these a year, and we've suddenly got 1,000 people coming to us every year for tax credits and loans?
It probably will hit a wall.
Well, with the, if I, if I might-
Yeah, and then I'll go.
On the, on the state income tax exemption, it's passed, it's law, and it's not, it's a, it's a revenue loss, it's not an expenditure item. So, in some sense, there isn't a fund that's going to run out. The legislature could get fed up at some point and say, we're losing too much money.
Except if it's refundable, right?
Right.
If it's refundable, that's expenditure beyond-
That's true. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
Go ahead.
Which is not right now.
Initially, that fund was created for, if, say you have, you inherited your, your grandparents' house, and it had old-school cesspools in it, and you either wanted to sell it or the, or the system failed. In either instance, you, your clock stock's ticking. So, you have to upgrade that system within, I think it's a year. You know, you, and what they do is they monitor how many times it's being pumped. So, what happens is you get on a list, and it was forcing people to upgrade. And when that happened, they didn't have the money. So, they came up with this mechanism to be able to help them through the county. I don't think the county was ever expecting, to your point, this, the abundance so quickly of these upgrades. Because up until two years ago, like, my house has been up for, I think, seven or eight years. I went, I installed it, top-of-the-line everything, and it cost me $40,000, and I did it. You know what I'm saying? So, at that time, it was top-of-the-line septic system. So, in order to put an IA on that, it cost me another 40. But I don't think that that was the intention of that fund initially. It was to help people that had no choice, you know? And, and it wasn't as, it wasn't as huge as this is going to be, if that's the only mechanism they used. I promise you that. I'll put them in, and there's been different kinds that are just crazy and space-consuming as well. Some people don't have the room to put some of these systems in.
True.
And what do you do? With no sewerin in, in sight, what do you do? And you're going to run into those problems, and then those problems are going to be litigated, which is more money. You know, you want me to do this, but I don't have the room to do this. What are you, what do I do?
And you don't have the installers to put them in. I mean, that's, that's the real practical problem is, it's, they're, right, Doug? I mean, from what I hear-
Right now, we don't have the problem, but it actually seems like it will be.
Yeah, but, but as, as it becomes more and more necessary.
And you've got to know what you're doing. Just the, every fly-by-night installer, these are intricate systems with engineering behind it, engineering-based. It's not throwing a 1,000-gallon tank in a pit in the ground like it used to be. They're, they're high-tech. Even the ones that are non-IA are high-tech now.
I have the answer to your question.
Oh, good.
The approximate number of parcels and suggested IA geoboundaries in all nitrogen-sensitive areas in Falmouth is about 6,500 parcels.
Oh, well, that's, that's a lot better.
That's better, sorry.
Times $10,000 is only 65 million.
Only. Only.
It is smaller than I thought.
Yeah.
It's smaller. It's smaller. You do?
I do.
Okay.
But that's the geoboundry. That's not the entire watershed.
No, right. That's the number, based on the draft plans of the Water Quality Management Committee, that's the number of parcels that would be required to upgrade to an IA.
But that's just in, in our own towns, planning for implementing geoboundaries.
Yes.
But the state, if you read closely the, the mandate, you know, the, to meet the TMDLs, they, they're not really talking a lot about it now. But if you read it, it says, eventually, we're going to have to clean up all the watersheds. So it's, it's, 65, I think, is a limited number. I think later, it's probably going to grow more.
Expand.
Okay, that's different from my understanding. I, I thought the regulation said we had 14 impaired watersheds, and this is our plan to address the 14 impaired watersheds. Now in the future, could there be another impaired watershed? Perhaps. We're running out of watersheds.
Probably.
We've got most of them.
Pretty much all of them.
Yep.
But, and, you know, I, I will say the Board of Health is looking at going beyond the geoboundaries for new construction.
Right.
And looking at putting in required IA systems for new construction and for change of use.
Right.
And I think they're working on a policy, aren't they, between-
A regulation, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, I attended a meeting, and I think Bob was there, with the Water Quality Management Committee and the Board of Health.
It would be-
And they were, they were working through that.
Potentially similar to the way construction is treated in the coastal zone. If you do significant improvement over 50% of the value of the structure, then you'll be triggering the IA.
Well, that's, I mean, I, that, that, that has some limitation, that has some problems with it, you know, as far as the, the, the guidepost, right? Because you may improve your house by 50% of its value, that has absolutely nothing to do with the outflow of, of, of sewers in your home.
Well, that's true. Yeah.
And does that make, you know, is that, is that a fair way to, to, to determine what substantial improvement? And I think that's one of the things the Board of Health, I think, is struggling as to how to define, you know, at least one person suggested that it be somehow connected to the increase in outflow as a result of the improvement.
Mm-hmm.
But if you're going to build a garage or expand your porch or do something that has absolutely no-
Nothing to do with it.
-relevance to, to this wastewater.
There's precedent for that, right? Like what you're talking about. It doesn't, it's not that you're improving specifically for coastal resilience. It's if there's significant improvement, you have to meet a higher standard. If you're in coastal zone, the same thing is true with ADA compliance. You hit a certain significance of renovation, you have to upgrade to. So I think there's, I think there's precedent for, it doesn't have to be renovation related to a specific purpose in order to trigger some of these requirements to upgrade to best practices.
Driven by bedroom, not bathroom. You can have 500 bathrooms in your house in one bedroom, which means that maybe two people live in the house. You can have as many bathrooms. And that's how it's driven.
But it could also be triggered if they vote it.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be some, that's, that's going to be the biggest sticking point, I think.
Or there's going to be a lot of legality behind this, isn't there? There's going to be a lot of lawsuits and-
It's possible. That's why I'm trying, that's why I'm being very careful about trying to protect the town's interests right now.
Yeah.
Like, right at the beginning, just being very, very conscientious about what words mean.
A lot of what I'm hearing from, you know, and it goes right back to the housing crisis. We continue to put these housing projects in that are detrimental to the nitrogen loading. And, and the people that feel like they're minding their own business and living their lives in their houses, they feel like they're being, you know what I mean? They're being singled out to fund our agenda as a town to create more housing. They feel like, some feel like we are exacerbating our problems and asking others to pay for it.
Another way to look at it is the people who've been here for 40 years have been, created the problem.
How so?
I-
With no new construction, we have a problem.
We've done nothing, Peter, but overbuild these lots. Go to the Heights. Go to the Heights and see. I, I grew up here. She grew up, you grew up in the Heights, didn't you? There was nothing in the Heights but cottages.
It was all woods and cottages.
Yeah, and cottages. Go look at it now. With all of those expansions came bigger-
Sure.
But you can't talk about housing without talking about water. And I think sometimes, sometimes we get groups that just talk about water and just talk about housing. And you cannot do that.
Right, right.
But you see, when, when there's opposition to these big housing projects, you see where water comes into it quite a bit as, as, you know, a public, in order to, in order to supersede a special permit or, or, um, an affordable housing project, one of the, one of the stopping points in theory is, um, public safety. And then that's where the water comes in. You know what I mean? We, we just heard it in a couple of big cases. You know what I mean? But it goes to the state. State doesn't, you know, they don't care. So whether or not we created this problem, we continue to exacerbate the problem. I mean, we should be able to learn from the past, but we don't.
Thorny set of issues.
Hmm?
It's a thorny set of issues. Because they're, they interact.
Something's got to give, one way or the other. What do we, we, we make, we add 30% more housing in the town, take up every bit of the property, and everybody has IAs and it still doesn't cause, you know, it still causes a nitrogen problem? Then what do we do? I don't think you can have it both ways. We're only so big. That's going to be for you guys to handle, I'm sure.
Close the bridge.
And that's why, why it's got so happy right now.
Anything else from the board? Any other comments?
So, um-
Go ahead.
What's the inclination about the success? You, you sounded like you were optimistic about success in applying betterments to the IAs itself. Did I hear that correctly? You're getting, sorry to be optimistic about it?
Yes, yes. I, you know, I, I can't say, I can't guarantee we're going to get that letter from the Department of Revenue, but, but I'm cautiously optimistic. I, I think we've got a good shot.
Me too.
Should we come up with a, a plan of what we intend to do and then send them a letter and say, and this is what we want to do? What do you think?
Well, I, you know, we approach them as the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund for, on behalf of the entire Cape.
Yeah.
And different towns are going to have different approaches. So, you know, I think we want a generic, um, letter from them that says, you know, yes, it's allowed, or no, it's not allowed, or yes, it's allowed, and, and here are the, the boundaries, right? Here are the guideposts for ensuring that, you know, that there's a, a public purpose and that, that the, you know, preponderance of the benefit is public and not private, or I don't know what, you know, terminology they may use. And then, and then the hard work for us begins to craft a policy. That's going to take, you know, that's going to take a long time and a lot of stakeholders and a lot of dialogue.
What's a long time, though, in an estimate, you think? I mean, roughly, nothing, not to hold your feet to the fire.
To come up with a plan?
Yeah, I mean, and this isn't to, to corner you, I'm just curious. What, what is your-
A year, maybe?
At least, at least.
I was going to say, that's not as long as I would have imagined it would have taken. Because it is intricate. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, but I have, I have an engagement I have to. Fellow board members?
We're, we're close to-
Thank you.
Wrapping it up.
Thank you, guys.
Any other comments?
Um, also, I guess we're going to let the Water Quality Management Committee guide us further, but I'm wondering about the feedback from the board about the idea of a town-wide system of monitoring and us paying for that. Because the IAs right now, as they're being individually cited and monitored, I don't think is very successful. And the health agent has said that it's a big load for him trying to chase people to get the inspections and get the monitoring and be in compliance. So we need help.
I think somebody needs to bring it to, you know, bring the issue to us, you know, with the facts and figures that you're, you're, you're saying are out there. And then I think it's something we need to, need to consider. I mean, if the problem is that widespread, something, but, but we have to have something to react to.
Has the Board of Health submitted anything to your office regarding this?
I haven't seen anything.
Okay. I was just wondering if they had put anything that we could look at.
No, but I know the test center is developing a program and they're putting it out there for us to say, maybe we're interested or not and- What's the timeline on getting, that's Mastech? Do you know a timeline, Doug, when they're going to be? I don't know exactly where they're at, but I think they're ready to talk about it now.
Is that a question we could refer to Water Quality Management and Board of Health? For them to consider and, since they're deep in this planning and think, provide us with some advice and recommendations?
Yeah, Mastech did come to the Water Quality Management Committee a month or so ago and outlined that they see a need for this program. They're working to develop such a program that might be viable, you know, Cape-wide even. We'll follow up with the health agent, because honestly, I had not heard, I, I was aware of the issue, but I haven't heard from the health agent on, on this either. So we'll follow up with Scott. Right now, I think it's the Water Quality Management that's kind of investigating it and, but it's probably coming to us. But a lot of the burden falls on to the health, the- Yeah, he's-
Yeah, we'd want, we'd want the Board of Health to weigh in.
Scott has mentioned that it's a, it's a challenge for him to, to get them to be in compliance.
Yeah. But I think we need more specifics before we can bring it-
We need to see it.
More information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I do know-
But we should be ahead of it, too. I mean, if Mastech is, you know, at that point and looking to us, we don't want to just start the process then. We should start, you know, getting this information.
I just wanted you to be aware of it.
If they haven't made it known to us that they're looking at and they have some sort of plan, we can't talk about it because we don't know that. They, we, we need more information.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I believe the Board of Health has also, um, been talking for some time about developing, in response to some of these issues, of which systems seem to work well, which ones they see repeated problems with, has been working on potentially some guidance to homeowners, developers, something to try to. So it's, between the two of them, they are getting just, yeah, more, more of their perspective on where their issues and potential proposal from Mastech.
Yeah, I, I think it's about taking the burden off of, sort of, two things. One, there isn't really, there aren't enough, um, qualified private contractors to do this monitoring and maintenance. And secondly, to make it easier for individual homeowners rather than having, them having to go out to the private market and find someone that is, you know, qualified and reputable, you know, to, to look at it as sort of a, a utility. And that's, I think that's the concept that Mastech is looking at, is, you know, ramping up a staff of qualified people. And, and it may even be that the, that the homeowners pay for it. But, you know, maybe Mastech can bring the cost down or at least, you know, create a large enough workforce that will meet the, the demand.
It sounds like we don't even have installers to do IAs, so we have to start with that problem as well.
We have a vested interest in making sure that the monitoring is done properly.
Yes.
I mean, that's something, and we have to invest in that.
Yes.
Some of our funds, we, we need to invest in. Otherwise, we're going to be faced with a problem down the road.
And why would we be doing this if we can't monitor its, the success?
Exactly. For better or for worse, if it's a single monitoring system, then we get much more systemic data about whether or not our efforts are working. With a whole bunch of private contractors going out and doing individual homes, I don't know how we ever get that big picture.
And when you, and when you're making the homeowner pay for it, sometimes it doesn't get done.
Right.
And that's where the problems come in. And then that's where Scott is chasing people around and threatening fines and, you know, becoming-
And then your data just isn't accurate.
Yeah, that's the biggest part of it, is they're just not working. By the time you figure out that it's not working, it's kind of too late.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second, third.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.